Okay, welcome to the Acton, Town of Acton Planning Board meeting for March 9, 2023 at 6:00 P.M. I'll stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys get a chance to look through the minutes.
There's an extra page on there.
Sorry.
Minutes.
Not my fault. Chris is.
Yeah, there's, um...
That's what it is?
Yeah. The end of page two, we adjourn. And then page three, there's pending projects and we adjourn again.
Right, that's just a part of the agenda or something.
Yeah.
Jason.
I didn't even look at, uh, I didn't, I looked at the first page and that was it.
I think if we take off the third page, make it one and two.
I'll correct it.
I'm gonna abstain from this one.
Likewise.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from March 2 as corrected.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Alright, uh, we'll start with new business. That's the only business we have tonight, so... Which one you guys wanna dive into first? One, review procedure in public hearing? Six point six, point three, point four?
That's the easiest one?
Well, we came back with, uh, no issues, obviously, um... So... That's, that's, that one's ready to go forward, if that's what you guys feel you wanna do.
Should we make motions as we go, or?
Yeah, I would think so. That way we can just move them.
So what's the motion to submit? That to the Select?
To the Select Board, yeah.
That's six point six, point three, point four?
Yes.
I move we, uh, submit the proposed zoning ordinance change at six point six, point three, point four, uh, to the Select Board.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Alright.
We do have six people voted.
Yeah, you, it's only five, so somebody has to...
I'm not voting.
Well, it's just a matter of protocol that we need to, uh, announce who the alternate is that's gonna be voting at the beginning of the meeting if we have
Oh, yeah, yeah.
extra members, 'cause, and then we keep track, 'cause next meeting we'll switch to the other alternate. Just so that... That's what we usually do.
Yeah, nice base, though.
I can't remember. I guess... I guess it was Ryan voted last time.
Ryan's not an alternate. It's Adam and Chelsea.
Okay, well...
I think Adam was here last time and Chelsea was, was absent.
I was here for the last one.
Oh, you were?
Oh, sorry.
I was absent on the second.
I don't remember what I did yesterday.
Is that his turn?
That's what I would think, yes.
Okay, so...
No, no voting from my side.
You can still put your input in, though.
Right.
But it always comes.
Yeah, it doesn't change anything.
Yep.
For the minutes.
Alrighty, so let's go to the next.
Uh, six point, you wanna do solar?
Well, it looks like the next easiest gonna be one.
Oh, the one, next one page, yeah.
Whichever one you want.
We'll do solar since we keep going back to this and get it.
I think we can ignore his first comment on that first page. That's existing language.
Yeah, I, I understand where he was coming from, because it's, what is a non-existing structure? Non-existing, you know?
You're gonna build one. But that's our, that's in, you know, change there is adding non-solar.
Mm-hmm.
That's already in the ordinance.
Next.
And basically, that would just be defining it not being on a building, correct?
Yeah, it's ground-mounted. That's what those ones go for, I think.
And he suggests putting the word "new" in there instead.
New.
Clarification, I guess.
I don't know if that's any clearer, because you could, a new structure could be something you just built last week, or, and then it was a small house you built last week, and then you put the solar on it, it could be... I mean, I don't know.
Be on a not previously existing structure?
Funny, 'cause we ran his language by him. Last time he put one and he made the initial change, and he didn't say anything about it. Well, I mean, there's no reason we have to change it now. We can always submit it like this, and if the warrant financing, uh, selectmen say, "Hey, we don't like that," then we can, we always have time to change it.
Yeah, I mean, it's existing language.
Yeah.
Except for the non-solar, which we did to differentiate it from solar.
The only other one was a comma that...
Yeah.
That's it?
Yeah, no issues with that one.
I feel like we're gonna have more comments from the selectmen than from the lawyer.
So you've added the commas, Jason?
I added the comma. I had to add another comma, excuse me. Comma's been added. Two of them.
That makes sense.
Your old, your old eyes over there.
So do we wanna go with "new" or leave it "non-existing"?
I'd rather go with "new." I mean, I can see how, you know... It does look kinda funny, renewable energy installed on a non-existing structure. I see, I see his point.
But is there a difference between...
I wouldn't use "new," because a new structure couldn't, doesn't mean it's ground-mounted. A new structure means it could be a house.
Right.
So I don't like just putting "new."
Well, I guess a non-existing structure could be a house, too. If you really pressed it.
True.
I mean, you know, I, yeah, I feel like there's, there's flaws in either of the verbiage.
Why don't we just say "ground-mu-"
Yeah, why can't you just say "ground-mounted"? 'Cause the only two, there's only two forms right now, as of right now, which would be ground-mounted or
Rooftop.
on a, on a rooftop, yeah.
Well, we're talking about non-solar, so it would be like, uh, a tower for a windmill, or... It wouldn't necessarily be, the renewable energy source wouldn't necessarily be a ground-mounted system.
Where is, where do you see F states "non-solar"? Oh, right underneath, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it kinda blends in with G.
Do you wanna buy these?
Got me on that one.
You know, it could be a hydraulic or dam.
Windmill?
Or a windmill, yeah.
To me, "non-existing" would cover that.
Yeah, I, I, I feel like that works better than "new."
Yes, I would agree.
I, I feel it's not bulletproof, but I'd have to change it to make it.
I'd opt to not change it for it may. So it covers a windmill, covers a, potentially a dam, hydroelectric, the way it's written? Which wouldn't necessarily be a structure. I guess it would.
Well, retain while the structure, so dam would be a structure.
But it would have to be a dam that wasn't already existing.
Right.
If it, they took that dam with on hop, and they would turn that into a hydroelectric generator, it would, it would fall under
Existing structure. Great, yeah.
I don't know how much I wanna pick apart that part of this.
Yeah. Dam is a structure.
Yes.
So do we wanna leave it as is, or?
That's my option.
I would agree.
You alright with that, Ryan?
Yeah, no, yeah, after that discussion, those are all good points, yeah, I think. You know, and maybe the lawyer didn't think that, that in-depth about the
Yeah.
the, the language, so...
I think he didn't realize it was existing language. Alright, I move that we, uh, send the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to solar energy systems to the selectmen, uh, with the comma correction, uh, that Jason has made.
I will second that.
All in favor? All, all opposed? I'll save the best off the last. We'll do six point six, point three.
I haven't got through his comment yet.
I know, I can't re- Can you blow that comment up?
Yes, I can. Give me a, give me a s- give me a second.
Particular item there, though, wasn't that more specific to mineral extraction? And not necessarily a conditional use?
That's what he's stating, and, and the discussion that I had, I'll put it, I'll blow it up on the screen. Discussion that I had with the, the legal counsel was that, um... Oops, he feels that, um, it, it'd just be a little outlandish to do it for every conditional use, more or less. With the mineral extractions, the solar, and any other larger projects that come in, you just put it right in their conditions. And any change of use, so if somebody buys a property that has a conditional use, if they, any change of use is subject to come back to the planning board anyway. You know, he, one of the, you know, let me get that comment on there for you. So, it says...
You want me to read it?
Essentially, I don't think this is a good idea. I really don't think that you or the board wants to be in the position of having to go through some type of review procedure every time a property with a conditional use permit changes hands. After all, conditional use permits are granted based on the determination of a particular use is appropriate on a particular property, not on the person requesting the permit. I think the better approach is the one the board is taking with the proposed changes to mineral extraction ordinance and solar ordinance. That is, when the use involved is one that could be particularly problematic because of its intensity, include provisions allowing the CEO or the board to conduct periodic reviews to make sure the operations are consistent with the conditions of the approval. I think this is a much more practical approach than a blanket requirement for review, just because a conditional use property changes hands. I also can't imagine what would be involved in requiring the new owner to prove financial and technical ability.
So, a couple of things. I wrote up the proposed language, um, based on comments that people had given me. And I felt like having it be for all conditional use permits was, you know, was more equitable across the board. We weren't targeting certain types of businesses. That was one, one reason that I liked it for the conditional use permit. Also feel like this is something that, that could pass, even if the mineral extraction changes don't pass, that would still help us out in that area. And I was thinking about other, like, what do we, what kind of projects do we give out conditional use permits for? And I think a good example of one that this would help us with would be, uh, Iron Tail Saloon. Where there's, Iron Tail Saloon, say, they change his hands, the new owner is, you know, he comes right into, meet with Jason, and he has an idea of what, what the existing conditions are on his property, and can review them with the town. Other examples of conditional use permits that we put out are, um, like Wedding Barns, where they're not putting up new structures. And we did one on Blueberry Hill. And I feel like that some of the conditions we put forward there would be, would be great to review with a new owner or operator. Just like the barn they were using, it was really old, dry wood, there was old hydraulic fluid on the floor. And I wanted conditions, said, "Nobody smokes in the building or near the building." And that's just something that you review that with the new owner and operator. And, you know, maybe it would help, um... Also, um, I feel like it wouldn't be a bad idea to put this thing forward to the selectmen, even if we don't actually put it to town meeting, because I'd, you know, one of the selectmen was actually someone that, um, gave input that I, that I took and put into this verbiage. So, you know, we had, you know, four members, four or five members of the board approve it. The code officer likes it. I'd like to see what the, the rest of the town peoples think, the, the selectmen and the Warden Finance Committee. And if they, if they agree with the, the, uh, the lawyer, that we have plenty of time to remove it and not put it forward at that time. This is kinda my thinking on it, if you're... Put that out there.
Once we vote on it, we can't make changes, because it goes to warrant.
No, we can-
We go to a public, we have a public hearing still. So my, my, my question that I kind of agree with him-
We can't give him another article to put on the warrant, 'cause they're like, "Oh, that screws up the number system."
But we, we changed, we changed the verbiage, and we had to come back for a special meeting last year.
My comment, I guess, to the board would be, um, I kind of agree with him. It's not our responsibility to understand if they have the financial or technical ability.
Why don't we just take that?
You know, I think, you know, we, what, if somebody buys a piece of land, it's not our responsibility to know if he has enough funds to, to run his business.
No, but if they hold insurance that, you know...
Right, but I get the insurance and the surety if the surety was required, but we don't need proof of financial and technical ability, like if, if, um, Chelsea's husband sells his thing in her, their auto body shop, and the guy wants to be an auto body mechanic, the state doesn't require you to be a licensed mechanic. You can just, you can just tinker on people's vehicles. So the technical ability, you know, you understand where, there's some verbiage in there that I don't know if we should have.
Alright, well, that's where I got that verbiage from you, financially, technically.
Yeah, I think I was going more towards, um...
But we, I don't mind taking it out, but I, it might-
That'd probably be the easiest thing.
Yeah.
Take that out, and then...
Along that same train of thought, if, if somebody were to purchase a property that's already under conditional use, is the onus on the town to make sure that that new buyer understands the conditions, or is that, forgive me, I'm new, is that part of the, the due diligence, if you will, for the buyer to understand the conditions? It's on the buyer, but the town, but the land use department to enforce the condition. So it's on the buyer to do his due diligence to find out what conditions were set, or the seller to release those conditions, but, um, you know, it's on, it's on the land use department to ensure that the conditions are being followed and met. Well, that's what I mean, it, so the, I guess the part of my question is, is it an unnecessary or undue burden on the land use department to review these conditions with a potential buyer or a buyer who should already be aware of the conditions? I don't think it's gonna be that big of a, I mean, I don't, how many times does properties change hands that have a condition use? It's not like we're gonna be burdened with teneties in the next 12 months, you know, you might see one a year, if that, and all you're doing is just making sure that they understand what they, what they shouldn't, shouldn't be doing, um...
We have conditional use permits out there that are decades old, and they have, they haven't been brought back in and been reviewed, and the ordinance has changed multiple times since the conditions were granted, and unless they come in, we don't update it. But... I don't know, I mean, I... I, I, you know, like I said, I think it's worth putting it forward to the selectmen, whether or not we put it to town meeting is, you know, kinda up to other people's opinions, too, or they personally, but it's probably just 'cause I crafted it.
I like the idea of getting them in, and, and I can agree with taking out the financial and technical stuff. That does complicate it. So I, you know, what we could put forward is, uh, a slight change that whenever a parcel or tract of land, subject to CEO permit, changes ownership or leaseholder, the new operator shall review the conditions with the code and, uh, enforcement officer. The new operator will provide, uh, a COI citing the Town of Acton, and, and renew any surety pertaining to the project. Change that sentence a little bit to eliminate proof.
You wanna just give it a quick look over on the screen?
'Cause then we get them in without the, without the financial stuff. Now, you wanna take out proof, 'cause now we're not proofing, we, we've taken out the words about proving financial. So instead of proof, say, "The new operator will provide..." Yeah, that'll come out. "Will provide," and then take out "includes but is not limited to..." Yeah, I think that would work.
How are you gonna enforce that? Like, do you review when the property changes ownership?
That's a tough one to say, but a lot of times people will call and ask, um, about properties, not all the time, but that, it is another, that is something, um... That's, that's something to think about. How do you?
So definitely not checking every time a property changes hands?
No.
If it's a used, if the buyer is not doing-
Realtors, realtors will call or come in when listing a, um, a property to make their look, a septic, they'll look at the conditions, um... That would be the best time to say, "Hey, listen, the new buyer needs to beware, they need to come in front of the planning board," but...
Not every realtor does that.
Not every, what, you're saying you don't do that?
Not saying myself.
Um, but... I mean, it's not really, it's, it, it would maybe be one of those things that if you found out that it was changed hands, you would just pop in and say, "Hello, how you doing? You gotta come in front of the planning board." Welcome to town.
It's all you. It says you, right?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Almost an honor system, kinda, yeah.
Would that cause a problem if we miss, if somebody was missed? Like, they change problems, they change hands, you know, we didn't call them and say, "Hey, you have to come in front of the planning board," and then their neighbor sells their house, and they do have to come in front of the planning board, like- Is that open to conflict there? Not treating people fairly?
Well, the whole ordinance is written to say that we hope that you guys follow it.
We have that.
You know, it's not, it's not all, you know, people don't know the ordinance.
Yeah.
They just, you just hope that they're paying attention to it. So...
What were we just saying, Chris?
I was just curious if we should include, it says include provisions allowing the CEO and, and/or the board to conduct periodic reviews to make sure the operations are consistent with conditional approval. Should that be in here, or just as a condition?
I don't think we need to, I mean, we have the purview to do that already. I think the only issue is that we can do that point four, but we can't do that for conditional use permits that are outstanding, that are already out there, and some of those are the ones that we're trying to get in.
Yeah, the mineral in particular.
I think it's a good idea that, you know, like, Iron Tail Saloon, for instance, if we had those conditions on there, that asked him to come and periodically review with us, like, that would have been a great idea, but I don't think we have that as a condition.
Right.
Did we ever sign that?
I don't know.
Did we ever sign that, Jason?
Yes.
We did?
Yeah.
Took forever.
Yeah, yeah, we did it, uh-
For a year.
Uh, last year, this time, I believe. I think. I don't know.
We could put a C in that says conditional uses, a generic one, this would help us if mining. The mineral, mineral one goes down. We could put something about in that paragraph, see existing conditional uses will be subject to review pick a time, every two years, three years, five years.
Yeah, but that brings, I don't. I'd rather not deal with Chris's wife's daycare or somebody else's smaller business that's up and operating within, you know, under the radar and doing a good job.
I think we just make it a tool we use going, this, put this in so we get the guys who change hands, but then make it a tool going forward. You know, it doesn't help us now with iron tails, but. Did we have it in the solar that they have to come in?
Well, we had the every 10 years, we just changed it to 10 years the other week.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I'd be happy to put the amended version forward and then if selecting the warrant finance, feel like it's unnecessary to strike it at that time.
I agree with that. I, I think we should send it forward.
Yeah, no, it doesn't mean it's going all the way to town meeting. It just means that it's being presented to the rest of the town. That's, that's what I think, but.
Yeah. That's good. I move that we forward the proposed amendment to zoning ordinance relative conditional use permits at six, six, three, two, um, with as amended uh this evening.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed? All right, next up would be five point nine mineral exploration and mineral extractive industry.
So one of the things right off the bat I, we need to change is the title.
Yeah.
Uh, it's not relative to conditional use permits, it's relative to either mineral extraction or mineral extraction and extractive industry.
Whatever five nine is called. Five point nine is mineral, mineral exploration and mineral extractive industry.
So just change it to relative to mineral exploration and/or extraction.
I just wanted to let them know that.
Yeah.
I didn't want anybody saying there's a, you know, they, things like this have been shot down, uh, with, you know, at town meeting where you just have like a simple little, you know, something wasn't shaded, it wasn't, so it wasn't presented properly.
Or missing a comma.
Yeah, I mean, I was at one, I was just like, really? But it happens and it is a typo, so we need to try to get it.
In, in the use chart, it's called uh more simply mineral extraction industrial on page seventeen.
Mineral extractive?
Mineral extraction industrial.
I know, that doesn't really line up with.
Do you want extraction, T I O N?
I was copying off the top of this other page.
It'd be nice if it was the same verbiage we have from five point nine point two, but that's what we've got.
Okay, well.
Well, no, I mean, we've got mineral extractive industry and mineral extraction industrial. Nice if those were the same, just one, one of them, but whatever.
Yeah, I don't, it would be nice, but I don't know if we should change it.
Oh, I don't, no, I don't think we should mess with that.
Yeah.
What do you want, mineral extraction industrial or in, or mineral extractive industry?
I think we should do the mineral exploration and mineral extractive industry.
Just the five point nine?
Yeah, or we can get rid of that whole paragraph and just have, start our amendment with five point nine point two mineral extractive industry.
Yeah, that's true. We're not changing anything in five.
Right. I think we should title it whatever the section is that we are dealing with in the bodies of the ordinance.
Mineral extractive industry.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what do you think about striking five point nine point one? From the, the verbiage presented so.
You know, I'm for that because those meetings people get it will start discussing approved language in, in the ordinance. You know, they won't like something that's already in it.
That we're not even talking about.
That we're not even, right, so that would give them an opportunity, somebody an opportunity to argue about that perfectly, so. I'd recommend we just start, we do start at five nine two.
So that would be the new five point nine?
Yeah, that would be the start of the change.
But leave that in the ordinance?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I thought you were saying strike it completely.
No, no, no.
So just get this right off the article.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not being up offered as a change.
Done.
Yeah, there you go.
I thought you were wanting me to.
That I thought.
And I was like, wait a minute, hold on, I started going to the definition section to see if there's something. All right, that's. Pretty much what he was stating on section eight on page two of five, um, in our solar ordinance, if you go back to the one we were at earlier on page, on the third page, on five point two nine point two, use the verbiage pretty much what they're using in this, that one that I was looking at? Nope, excuse me, I lied. Oh, um, it's, so on the second to last page, um, you have the following submission requirements applied to the application for large and medium solar farms. And then he describes what they need to do with, it's, he just says, he just felt that it was more, uh, explain, explanatory.
That makes sense.
Yeah, because the response from the main historic preservation commission could be.
A phone call.
Could be anything.
Right.
Very open ended, very written documentation from the main historic preservation commission regarding any known or likely historic resource or archaeological resources located in or on the subject property.
So basically, you just take that verbiage from the solar and just transfer that over.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm going to try to do that in a second, so I'm going to just.
Then we're consistent.
Just going to have to change some verbiage where it says solar.
Yeah.
Farms.
Yep.
Why can't we just change that verbiage? He is, he's going to put this in. Right up here. Yeah. He's going to put that there, but take out the solar words. Except for D, I think we have D covered with number nine.
Somehow I got it onto two pages here, I gotta switch it back over. And we got to change those to.
Eight, nine, 10.
Um, or one, two, three, four, or not A, B, C?
Well, it's, I mean, we have numbered things they have to do.
Yeah.
Provide, so I'm also just making numbers. Eight, nine, 10, 11, and nine becomes 12.
On the solar one, we have it, the number, and then each of those are A, B, C, and D. Like it would be eight and then nine would be A, 10 would be B, 11 would be C, to keep it consistent with the other one.
Yeah.
Yep.
What is happening? Yeah, I didn't see the following submission.
Because everything is a sub.
Right.
Title off of.
Eight.
Eight. So how'd you change that, Jason?
What are we saying right now? I'm trying to play with the format right now.
Go back to, go back.
Nine, 10, 11 need to be A, B, and C.
A, B, C.
Oh, you want to do it. As I just changed it.
Can remove the seven from number eight as well?
Yeah, you got seven. All right, so this is going to be. A.
That one would be nine, because that one's not changing.
Forgot my mouse downstairs, so it's kind of hard to navigate right now.
We're missing one.
Right, the Department of Transportation, we need to stick the entrance permit back in there.
Okay.
That would be D.
And let's see.
Entrance permit from Department of Transportation if required.
All right.
You still got to get rid of the seven up next to the break.
Seven in the period. Base, Chelsea said.
All right.
Those As have to be indent.
Does it work if you indent them in the?
Try some out in a second, let's see if this works.
Gambled in one on that one, huh?
Save.
We're all staring at you, trying to do this.
Trust me, I don't know how I just did that, so.
That was impressive.
Yeah. What's that, Chris?
No, D's.
What's that, the one, two, three, four?
No, the D performance, then shouldn't that be over?
No.
The paragraphs start with E, C, and D, you get to numbers under the letters, so that, that D is fine.
Yeah, it lines up. Yeah, that lines up.
And then the rest of it was up for interpret, like his, just his language that he thought made more sense, that's all.
I just, the, the D is followed by a period, whereas A, B, and C are followed by a closed parenthesis.
What are you talking about now?
Oh, yep.
So. A, B, and C.
So not do periods, do parentheses?
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Now you guys are really getting technical on me.
Just like to see you try to pull something off, if you can do it in a group of four again.
No, I meant the one, I meant the performance standards.
Well, they're all like that, too. So I think he's fixing.
Oh, okay.
Them all to be. Parenthesis instead of periods.
I'll have to do a little bit of editing just on some of the other ones.
On page four, there's some, too.
Maybe I can see as we. His problem. But if we move it to the, I'm, that's what I was just thinking in my head. If I move it up front, then it's performance. Like there shall be no crushing or screening on July 4th, nor on Saturday.
Well, actually, I think we did that because 4th of July moves.
Right, we say, we wanna say that specifically.
Jason, didn't you say this one you'd already actually corrected, the 4th of July?
Yes, I did.
So what, what our verbiage says is Labor Day or on 4th of July, and that's. That's in your mind corrected?
This, and on this one, I had corrected it on a different version, on his version, not on this version. So his version has all the red marks on it.
Yeah.
Uh, but I did not on this one, so it's. What did it, what did I have?
Or on.
Or on, yes.
What we've got here.
Yep. Or on the fourth.
That's the corrected version? That's the version he. He, he didn't understand.
Or on. He just didn't think, what did he have? He corrected it to, yeah, or on. What do we do here?
He just said it needs to be clearer. I don't think he did anything.
It had to do, um.
I thought I corrected. Or on and and would work in the same thing, I would think.
The only thing I would do is make that or a nor, because we say no.
It was and.
It was and, yeah, so on the old.
We had it as and.
Yeah, so, thank you.
So or on 4th of July makes more sense than and the 4th of July.
Can we do it nor on the 4th of July? Because we can't do something, and the second half of that phrase is you also can't do something.
Nor on the 4th of July.
Yep.
All right. I gotta get this back to one, one page per screen. Anybody know how to do that one?
Um.
Shut it down and restart it? Don't lose it, save it.
I just saved it a second ago.
I'll instruct somebody else to do it.
Hey, there it goes. It got saved.
If you go down in the bottom right. And hit the, like, view that's one page instead of two.
Oh.
Like over here.
Although the, although it is, that one.
There you go.
Something's happening here. I gotta do something. Give me. There it is.
Okay, but there's changes in six.
Um, changes in six, okay. So strike tracked.
Yep.
Yeah, tracked comes out.
And add in from the extraction site which accumulates.
And then exiting their property.
Taking out exiting their property. Any need a space between debris and from?
The next change is in number nine.
That's a happy to glad.
What do you think about nine? Kinda just changing the verb, just turn, changing it around, but meaning the same.
Yeah, it's, it's clear, it's a little bit clearer.
Yeah.
Comma, that's why.
Ah, delete.
Looks good.
I'm assuming that you guys are all set with that. If not, I will take it back out.
I don't think it's necessary, but there's no harm in putting it in.
I can take it back out?
No, I mean, either way it works, I think. I mean, this way makes it sound like there will be violations of remedial actions, but.
Yeah, that wording is weird.
But, yeah, either way it works.
I think after results, I'd like to see including any violations and required remedial actions.
Is that banned?
Yeah.
That softens it a little bit.
Yeah, it's just, I don't know, it's weird the way it's written.
Uh, in writing of any inspections.
You'd even say comma if any at the end of that sentence.
So just changing and to including.
On after violations?
After results.
After results, the, the first and.
Change it to including.
Mm-hmm.
Including if any, is that what you were saying, John?
No, no. Including any viola, shh, shh, shh. Well, yeah, that's okay. Never mind. I withdraw what I was talking about.
Did you wanna put the if in there after including? Because not every inspection, if there's an inspection, it might not have a violation, you know?
Yeah, the word any takes care of that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I sort of withdrew.
Okay.
We could say including any potential violations. Yeah, I think, I think any kinda covers this area, yeah.
Yeah.
But with C, I think.
With the changes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I am, too.
Yeah, I'm good with the changes on C. Just cleans it up.
And that was the last one for that.
Little quick read over of that one. You good with them? Everybody? Wonderful.
Do we have to make a motion on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I move we forward to the Select Board the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to mineral extractive industry.
I will second that.
All in favor? Opposed?
Um. Take one, pass them around. Those are for you to take home and read. Uh, there is a typo in something that I already told him to please correct. Just said findings of face, which I think he did in the last one, too, so, um. Just take them home, review them. It's the findings of the facts and everything that he looked through and stuff like that.
Have we got everything from?
Um, he did send me a letter. I didn't print it out, um, and it's more or less. Oh, did I give you one? Oh, the second one, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, the second one, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't print it out because I didn't know if it's necessary yet, and it's a letter to the planning board, which pretty much is asking the town to take the lands that three rivers doesn't want. But that's for the select board, not for the planning board, they have to, that's there, so I for, for, I emailed him back and said, please, um, please send this along to Jen Rue, so she can put you on the agenda for the select board.
Yeah, yeah, because it's not really.
It's got nothing to do with the planning board to take the land, so, um. I didn't, that's the reason why I didn't print it up. Who wasn't here last week?
I wasn't here.
That, did anybody else get a new copy of the, um, planning board checklist for applications? Just Pat, get one of the last ones. Didn't tell Virginia she could reach, we'd be home by seven thirty tonight, so.
Back to those changes, the, um, the solar one's going to require change to the table of contents before we go, you know, to the the town voting issue. Right, that has to be done. So we add in a five point two nine for solar, and the page numbers will subsequently change. I know, we don't have to do that now, but I, that has to we have to make sure that gets done. And then I think we need one more admin, or maybe before the town meeting. Um, we need another admin look to make sure, you know.
Mm-hmm, no, that's fine. Um, that's what he's here for, um. So just want to put in the, uh, in the front of the the index, table of contents, just we'll have a
It's gonna be a five point two nine now.
And I think there were a couple of the pages that were wrong.
There is some, and, yeah, that was a, I don't know how that happened, we, well, I do know how it happened, I just don't want to take it, take, um, responsibility for it.
Blame Davey's not here, it's easier.
Huh?
Just blame Davey's not here.
It's his fault. No, Dave's actually been a big help downstairs, keeping things organized. I can't put the blame on him.
So, so, tell me the timeline now, we've approved these, go for
So, uh, tomorrow I'll have these, um. I will make sure everything doesn't, these don't have drafts on them, and I will send them to, um, to the town administrator, so she can get them ready for the select board. And then on the, I believe on the twentieth, um, they have to be presented to, um, I actually, I had left it on, I think, they'll review them too, and then, and then move them along to the, to the Warren Finance if they, and with their recommendations, I think. I'm not positive, I hate not. But we meet with the, uh, Warren Finance on the twentieth. I don't know if, I think the select board gives us their approval prior to that too, what they think about it. I will, um, I'll send out an email tomorrow, I have to just ask about it, um.
And we don't establish the town meeting until, the public hearing until after that?
Yeah, I think so. As long as it's thirty days prior to the town meeting.
Unless we want to do an additional one, like sooner.
Yeah.
Just, just so that we can get public input, you know, because once we get to the the one right before town meeting, there's hardly enough time to change the thing.
Right. Yeah, I don't think we need to wait to thirty days.
No.
I'd argue with the ease we go sooner. So if we get some good feedback, we could make the change and then do the second public hearing.
Is that something you think we should schedule a hearing for these? Sometime in April, just to get it?
Yeah, I think we should, I guess we should get the feedback, you know, if something's dead on arrival with the selectmen, we should get that feedback before we schedule the hearing.
I guess so, but I mean, the hearing's gonna cover which are, you know, it's gonna be the same material regardless, even if it's three of them instead of four, instead of the same D for the year, I don't know, it's just
Yeah?
I just feel like otherwise, we won't, we won't schedule a hearing.
Yeah? We do it, it's April sixth.
I don't know, is that a regular scheduled board meeting?
What's that?
April sixth?
April sixth is a regular scheduled meeting.
Yeah.
It's the first it's the first, uh.
Meeting of the month?
Yeah.
We typically do it on a regular meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Do we have a lot on the agenda that's, that?
Next, next Thursday is our regular meeting, we have, um, peppins are coming in, um.
The daycare.
The daycare, a greatest practical extent preliminary review, like a review, um. And then on the April sixth, there's another greatest practical extent already scheduled, um. So, we're gonna get filled up here. But they're not, they're not ones that will take a ton of time, but once you, we, once, if, once or when the peppins move, then we'll have more time to, you know, I'm just
Yeah, because we'll probably see Peppin on the sixth as well.
If there's some changes that need to be made, yeah, I would think so, you know, unless he can't get them done, you know, but it, it, uh, I would think so.
And he'll be, you know, he'll be able to meet with the selectman fairly soon, you think, or?
Well, they meet once a week, so, um, if he gets, if he, if he messages, um, he, he could go down there as soon as next week, I would think, if they haven't, if they have time room on their agenda, but
Be nice if he even got to the selectman before the, our next meeting on the sixteenth.
He would be there Wednesday, and our meeting would be there for Thursday, but that's not for me to determine, that's
No, no.
That's their agenda, um, but I think that they would they're usually pretty good at accommodating people in this situation.
Yeah.
I think we should schedule it for one of the meetings in April. Sixth or the twentieth. Yeah, one of them.
Schedule.
Then that would give us time to get another one in, if we needed to.
Schedule a public hearing?
Yeah.
Public hearings need to be notified, those have to, those are fourteen day, I think, we have, because we haven't changed it, so ten days. Like, have to be the end of the, the third week in April. No. No, we can still do it.
Tonight is
No, I could still do it for the first week, yeah, I'm sorry.
You must have heard him, right, move that stuff around.
Yeah, I just don't want to have too much on our plate.
We can do it on an off Thursday, couldn't we?
I think so, if it's not, if we have ti, if we have availability of the meeting hall.
Well, if you schedule it for an off meeting, it'd be the thirteenth, in between April sixth and the twentieth. That gives you enough time to schedule. Everybody else can make it. It's off, so, you know, make sure everybody here is available. Oh, weather's starting to warm up, sorry, I missed the fly hats the other day. Do we want to formally do that?
So, uh, this is for amendments to the zoning, um, and I don't know if it, if only one of them has to meet it, but, um, notice of hearing shall be posted in the town office for at least fourteen days before the hearing, and at least two times in a newspaper of general circulation. The date is, the date of the first publication must be at least twelve days before the hearing. So I just need to run it next Thursday, and the Thursday, or next, I have to run it next week and then the week after, and I think that's the two times. And it'll be posted, I could post in the upstairs and downstairs, uh, tomorrow, if, if everything aligns properly.
Well, I think we what's on the table is to do it the thirteenth, so you have time to do all that. I guess we need to know if everybody can make, on the board can make it on the thirteenth.
I think so.
So then do we need a motion to schedule that? I move we schedule a hearing on, uh
I was looking at the dates, I'm sorry.
The ordinance, proposed ordinance changes, uh, on thirteen April twenty twenty-three. Right, that was it.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Opposed? We done? I move we adjourn Mr. Chairman.
Second that, man.
All in favor? Perfect.
Alright, thank you.